Welcome back. After a short break, we are ready to resume our agenda. Item 7K is a motion to approve an extension of the current contract with Petroleum Traders Corporation as the city's primary fuel supplier for an estimated volume of eighty thousand gallons of diesel fuel and one hundred twenty-five thousand gallons of regular unleaded gasoline at a cost of six hundred thousand dollars. Mr. Lewis, how are you?
How y'all doing today? May I counsel?
Doing great. Any questions? Councilman Clay?
Just one. I didn't even do a heads up because I thought I understood the answer. We're basically getting it for the same deal that we had before, but the price is variable based on the market, correct?
Correct.
Okay. That's exactly what I thought. It's as good a deal as we could get because we've had a good deal before.
Yes.
So if we've got the same markup against the market, we're getting a good deal again. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Councilman Carr?
I had a couple of questions I can ask you out here. I guess in a couple I want to ask you outside of council. So the tank capacity is here, so we get a hundred twenty-five thousand gallons, eighty thousand. So they come every month, every other month, something in there, right, and fill us up?
Yes.
Basically how it works. All right. Do we, per month, do we usually, you know, expend the full fifteen thousand gallons? Are we on E when they come back? Or are we somewhat halfway full or quarter of a tank or, I mean, just guesstimation?
To my knowledge, we're probably about, maybe about twenty-five, half, because once, when we get to a certain point, we call in for a, for a fill.
For what?
For to come in and give us a fill on diesel.
So when you get down to around, what you said, twenty-five percent, maybe?
Maybe five, maybe five percent, not sure. But I know we don't get, we don't wait till we get all the way down to E.
So you get, but you get close to E when they come back generally?
No, we don't take that chance. We don't get too close to E.
All right. Okay.
Councilman Allen?
No, I think this is great. My question basically was, you know, do you call in advance or is it a scheduled thing?
No, we, we call.
So I'm fine with it.
Councilman Gay? Is there a motion?
So move.
Thank you, Councilman Clay. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Carr. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are on to public hearings, part two. 8A is a public hearing for a rezoning from Business Park to residential multifamily for workforce housing and apartments at Zero Old National Parkway. Good evening, Ms. Rambo.
Good evening. I'm Madam Mayor and Council.
Evening.
Stated, you have a rezoning before you this evening for workforce, for approximately a hundred and eighty-two workforce housing units. The subject property consists of three vacant parcels, totaling ten point eight acres, running Old National Parkway, Gaby Road, and I-285. The applicant proposes, as said, to build these apartment complex. The developer is planning a mixed-income property with units targeting families earning between forty percent and seventy percent of the area medium income. And staff also notes that a final plat will be required to combine the three parcels. You have the criteria in front of you, so I won't go through those just, but I would like to clarify number B, and that should read, "The proposed rezoning will increase traffic, but it should not be problematic." This was reviewed by the Planning Commission at their August meeting, and they did recommend approval. Based on the examination of the shown criteria, staff recommends approval with conditions, with the subject's condition of being, "The project shall be built in general conformity with the site plan dated August seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rambo. Any questions for Ms. Rambo?
I have no question.
Councilman Carr?
No, no.
Councilman Allen?
No, I think, I think this is a good project and no questions. I like putting some three bedrooms in there as well.
Yep.
Well, all right. Let's hear, I'm sure the applicant has a presentation, so.
Great. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Julie Sellers, Dillard Sellers, seventeen seventy-six Peachtree Street, here on behalf of Blue Ridge Atlantic. The applicant, and John Maddox, is right here with me. This is a rezoning request. We are going to keep it sort of brief and high level. I know that you all are familiar with this and happy to answer questions, but I'm going to turn it over to John to talk briefly about the development that's being proposed.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for your time. As Julie mentioned, we will try to keep it brief to be conscious of everyone's time, but, you know, here for any questions that you have. So, Blue Ridge Atlantic, you know, has an affiliate in the Pacific Northwest Shelter Resources. Together as our sister company, we've developed over eight thousand units since nineteen eighty-two. There is some information about the project team, but I think really the biggest takeaway is that we are a long-term holder, an owner and operator. So our minimum hold period is fifteen years. So many of the questions that we receive, you know, throughout the process of working on this project, they are our concerns as well. So traffic, safety, noise, these are all things that we're acutely aware of, and, you know, it is in our interest as well as an owner to make sure that we provide a safe and clean space for our residents to live. Just to give you kind of a sense of some of the other projects we've worked on, we have two roughly fifty-unit projects. One is in Clarkston, the other is in Sky Harbor. There's some renderings that are finishing shortly. The Shambly Project is one hundred percent pre-leased. It's completing construction towards the end of October, but we've just seen incredible demand for this type of family workforce community. This is the property. It's on Old National Parkway. It's the undeveloped land in between the post office and a couple hotels across from the Piccadilly, just to give some context of what we are developing here. Going on to the next slide, as was mentioned, we have a hundred and eighty family apartment units. Councilman Allen, about, we do have fifty-five three bedrooms, so, you know, that is going, it is a family-oriented development. We want to have, you know, make sure that we are offering a variety of different unit sizes, unit types, so that it's available for families, city employees, police officers, general workforce, members of the community. So it'd be highly amenitized, so, you know, we'll have, as of right now, we'll have a playground, fitness center, onsite laundry facility, gathering area, and more. It's very well-located, next to a few different MART stations. There's some that are right on Gaby Road, some that are up Old National Highway. I did want to highlight the timeline, so, you know, it's a little bit of a process to go through these, these type of developments that allow for workforce housing. We would submit our application in October, hopefully close on the project beginning of January, finish construction sometime in September of two thousand twenty-six. Next, we have a site plan. Here's our initial layout. You know, the one thing that we would like to, you know, add, the general conformity to the site plan, we want to make sure that we do have the ability to change some of the amenities, change the location of the buildings, change building footprints. There are some easements on the property. This is not a fully engineered site plan, so we just want to make sure that we do have a little bit of leeways, that we're still able to, you know, make something that's buildable, but this is what we are striving to achieve. So you can see, it's well landscaped. There's going to be lighting all around the perimeter of the property, as well as on the buildings. It is going to be gated with vehicular access, so the entire, entire property will be gated in. Going on here, there's an elevation of comparable properties. And just to give you a sense of what we would try to develop, this is a similarly sized project that is fully leased up, located in Clarkston, a hundred and eighty-eight units. And the quality shown here is absolutely what we would try to, what we will develop in our community blue-sky apartments. So, you know, incredible clubhouse, you know, there's a fully furnished fitness center that gets a lot of use. We have granite countertops within the units, all Energy Star appliances, you know, really try to focus on those finishes so that we can create a place where residents really want to live and feel like a part of a community.
Certainly happy to answer questions. We do have on the screen for you the slight change to the staff condition that was in substantial conformity. And as John mentioned, just wanted some extra language to specifically recognize that the buildings could be configured to be able to create additional green space. It has not been fully engineered and just didn't want to have questions, you know, down the road with that. And then we knew that the security, so we did go ahead and offer, that was not, it wasn't in the staff report, but we thought that it would be good to go ahead and include. The property owner will provide security at the development with regard to the gated access. Certainly having the security cameras work with the city's cameras, the Flock system, so that they can be able to have access to that, as well as the unit available for courtesy officers. So we appreciate your time and support and happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Thank you so much. At this time, we'll declare the public hearing open. If anyone wishes to speak in regard to this, this proposal, he can approach at this time. Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Some feedback there. Questions? Councilman Clay?
I think I've gotten all my questions answered, so unless something else comes up during the discussion, I'm good.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Carr?
No questions.
Councilman Allen?
We talked at length earlier, and, you know, I just, I like what you're doing. That's an area that does need improving, and you're coming in and adding a lot. You are going to be adding a space for some of our police officers, you said there. How does that?
Yes, so we do have a courtesy officer unit available, so that would be a unit that is offered rent-free to a, you know, police officer who would live there. We have found that even just the presence of a police car can help, you know, deter crime.
And you also are going to make sure the cameras connect with our police department and so forth.
Yes, sir.
Have the correct ones, okay. Just, and on the lighting, I find out that, you know, a lot of places, when they have the lighting, they put in those decorative lightings, and it really doesn't, you need to make sure we have good lighting, so.
Absolutely.
Again, appreciate you coming out, talking with us about it, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, with, another quick thing, with courtesy officers, and I've got some experience with this, and it's a good thing that you're offering that, but obviously, you know, get with the police chief on that, how we do that. But I'd just say you want to make sure that whatever arrangement you're working out, that they're doing their part in whatever it is they're supposed to do. If they're supposed to, you know, walk the property or whatever it is you want them to do, that make sure that that's getting done.
Absolutely.
Whether it's clear or there's no misunderstanding, and usually you won't have a problem, but I've seen sometimes things go well. The owners weren't clear with, okay, so you get, so just, but y'all get that worked out with the chief and make sure you get somebody in there that's going to be covering you.
Absolutely.
My motion for approval.
Thank you, Councilman Allen. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Clay. All those in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous amongst those present, so that is Councilman Clay, Councilman Carr, and Councilman Allen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 8B is a public hearing to add property at Zero Lakemont Drive to the transportation overlay.
Thank you again. Once again, we have a, well, this is a little different. We have an addition to the transportation overlay. The subject property is located at Zero Lakemont Drive. It's also known as the parcel as shown. The five point two seven acres is part of a larger twelve point four nine acre site, which is used for airport parking. Most of the site is located in the city of East Point. The College Park portion of the property is currently zoned C2.
Ms. Rambo, if you could, could we either close the doors or, there's a little, I guess they're moving away. All right. Thank you, Officer Garrett. Appreciate you. Please proceed, Ms. Rambo. Thank you.
Certainly. Airport parking is not in allowed use in C2. The use is considered legal non-conforming. The applicant is concerned that the tenant, formerly Wally Park, now Sixth Car Rental, or even a future tenant, would someday terminate the lease and leave the property. If the use is abandoned for over six months, the site would lose its non-conforming status. The applicant is concerned about this possibility, and after exploring their options, has, including the possibility of de-annexation, we have decided to ask that the parcel be added to the transportation overlay. This will allow airport parking to be an allowed use by right. I use the criteria similar to the rezoning to analyze the petition, and that's before you. And the Planning Commission did review this at their August meeting, and they recommended approval. And based on the examination of the criteria, staff recommends approval as well. Happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Rambo? Councilman Clay?
No, I think it's very clear what's going on. I'm good.
Councilman Carr?
Just, how many additional spaces would that give them?
Well, it's not necessarily additional spaces, but they can tell you how many spaces are on that strip. Let's see if I can tell.
They just want to keep doing what they're doing.
Yeah, I'm okay with it. I was just curious. Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Councilman Allen?
No, I, you know, I think that's a fine use of it.
All right. At this time, I'll declare the public hearing open. If anyone wishes to come and speak on this rezoning, I'm sorry, the transportation overlay, feel free to approach at this time.
Wanted to make sure of the timing. Hi, James Winston Mattalay. We're in light, and we are the new owners of the property, so not here to address any questions that may come up, public or council.
I was just curious, approximate spaces?
Approximate space, well, that site is, the College Park portion of it is roughly five acres, but when you factor in the amount of green space that's there, that's unusable, it's probably closer to about three acres. So with that, you can get to maybe four hundred and fifty parking spaces, depending on how it's structured and set up. That's what it's close to right now.
Is that, that's total, the total?
No, that's just the College Park portion.
What's your total then?
The total parking count out there that they have right now is roughly thirteen hundred, it's about thirteen fifty in that range. And that's for the entire parking area.
Okay. All right.
So, and, and it's, you can see, which section of it is College Park versus?
Thank you, gentlemen. Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing none others, the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilman Carr. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Councilman Allen. All those in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous amongst those present. Councilman Clay, Councilman Carr, and Councilman Allen.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're moving on to the city attorney's report?
No, assuming, Mayor.
And now to the city manager's report.
Yes, Mayor. Forty-five page report that was submitted to you on behalf of the community building leadership team will, will stand available for you to read at your convenience, as we also will be sharing it with the public, including the condensed version. I'll just take a few moments to highlight the chronology of activities since you approved the budget, really going back to your May first meeting, when you did a preliminary approval of the budget and gave direction to your new city manager. That would extend over into the first quarter of the fiscal year, which will end on September thirtieth. I've outlined a process in the last two reports that we will be using to revisit the budget. That will include some of the priorities that individual ones of you expressed, that we didn't have an opportunity to fully, I guess, dig into. So that will be a part of the budget modifications. The restructuring was the major initiative that you endorsed back on May first. I presented two preliminary charts to you. They'll both be on the October sixteenth agenda, hopefully asking you to formally approve the departments of the, of the organization based on the charter requirement, but also the direction that you gave on May first. In conjunction with that, the departments, various department heads are looking very closely, meeting certain criteria, including our strategic goals, of what is required to get to that next level of high-quality community building. We're being conscious of costs that maybe need to be looked at, that could be actually some offsets. There's a lot of work ahead, by the requests that have come in themselves, and based on my overall assessment, we are going to need some additional resources. That doesn't mean all people, but across the organization and some big ticketed items. It's an education for me. I got probably almost an all-day session at the end of this week to talk with the community building leadership team about their assessments. That will be followed probably sometime between your regular meeting, October second and October sixteenth, with the request for a special meeting that I would project will be somewhat of a marathon, unless we break it up. But I believe we can probably do it in one session, according to your schedules, but over quite a number of hours, I would project. You will get a preview of the type of budgeting process that I will be recommending for the full budgeting cycle. And that is one that is certainly open to the public, but in a setting where you can have some real dialogue with your, with your leadership team. So the setting will probably be a little bit different than the workshops that we went back through in April and May. So that's just a recapsule of what I've already written to you, but a very busy schedule ahead to address the first quarter review of the budget.
Thank you, sir. Excuse me. Reporting, Mayor and Council. Councilman Clay?
I had only one item that I wanted to go over, and that is just a potential red flag and a suggestion. Last council meeting, we approved the school, the charter school. And I tried to get the noise report. I was promised the noise report. I still haven't gotten the noise report. I know we've approved it. This isn't the first time that, but it's probably the most glaring time that I've been patted on the head and told, "Okay, report's coming." Report never came. And I think that project is okay. I think we are okay on noise. But when I have a lot of trouble getting something that is very simple, supposedly done, something that was already supposedly presented before, what's so hard about getting it? And to me, that's a red flag. So I would suggest that we watch this project very carefully on noise, because my spidey sense just doesn't feel right. The corollary to that is that we need a mechanism for tracking things that get promised to us in council meetings, during discussions. And this isn't really on, this item isn't really on city staff. It's not like city staff fell down. We had already approved the thing, and they had said, well, they were still going to get the report. Now, maybe my email went bad, you know. I get lots of emails. It's possible. But I doubt, I don't think anybody else on council got the report, and I would think if they were going to send it to me, they ought to send it to everybody. That's what we usually do. So something I wish city manager you'd take an action item on, it doesn't happen a lot, but when we get promised things like that, even if it's not coming from our own staff, somebody on our own staff ought to be tasked to do the follow-up, even though it's gotten approved, to make sure that we, we get it. And then if we don't get it, or we do get it, and I look at it, or whoever's requested it, it might be somebody else, they see a problem with it, then they can bring it back to staff and say, "Hey, you know, you guys really do need to keep a close eye on this." I don't think there's a problem here. I really don't. But it just doesn't feel right.
Mayor, respond, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Very reasonable request. And in fact, I think it was, I don't, I think I've told you all that following council meetings, two days after each council meeting, the leadership team gets together for our standard meeting, and the first item on our agenda is the council meeting the previous two, two days. And I think it was two meetings ago that I requested of the city clerk that we needed something pretty close to what you just, just described. And lo and behold, the city clerk advised me of that, "Oh, I've already got that list developed for me." And so we have instituted that. We'll be instituting it at this next, this next meeting. So yes, I'm on the same page.
Great. Great. Okay. So they, my only ask then is that this particular item Great, great. Okay, so they, my only ask then is that this particular item, the guy's keeping an eye on it.
Well, I should, I should have said, from our last meeting, from your last meeting, I actually canceled the CBLT meeting just because they were working on budget modifications. So this would have been one of the items that we would have tasked in.
Okay.
But we'll make up for it this week.
Okay. That's all I have.
Councilman Carr?
All right. I hear you saying it's not really a problem, but in one sense, it's a problem in terms of just, you know, this body asked for something that, you know, it should be recognized and respected. Now, you could make a motion to reconsider and hold the thing until they bring us in the information, if you want, but.
I, I don't really think there's a problem, Joe, but it just doesn't feel right.
I, I hear you. Technically, there isn't, but we asked for documents. I expected documents, you know, and, but city manager, you know, you make sure you handle it and take care of it. I read the report. Great report. Good, solid information. Being informed is very important. So thank you for that. I want to thank staff for taking us through this hot summer. I think hopefully we're on the tail end of it. It's getting cooler out there, so I'm hoping we're on the downward slope of it. Chief, I heard about the fire the other day at the apartment complex, and I'm glad no one, you know, no serious injuries. There was something I wanted to mention. I don't have much at all today at all. I think I've talked enough today. Was looking at, I think it was a government entity, and they had a depart, not a department, but they had a staff position that was, I guess the best way to describe it, city manager, was a, a government concierge, in a sense. And I thought about us, because again, we're a hospitality city, and I think service is going to be, you know, we want to be above reproach. That's the idea. And there are little things that kind of fall in between where there, there technically isn't a department to handle certain things. Now, somebody can do it, but there are little things that we have that other cities don't have, for instance, and it's not big things, but little things like, like, like that, that some type of a floater, government concierge type of a person would take care of and handle. To give you an example, today I was on my way here, was coming down Camp Creek, and you all know the racetrack service station is on the right-hand side across from the Six West Development, right? So I'm passing the racetrack, and I see one of the red wheelchair chairs that belongs at Hartsfield Jackson, that somebody took from the terminal on the Skytrain, two-hour stop down the elevator and onto the racetrack, gas station, I guess. And I just said to myself, okay, well, now, who on staff would go get that thing, run it back up there and put it back at the Conrad, for instance, you know, that, that kind of thing? And, and, and so, so I just said to myself, I said, well, you know, police doesn't do that, Public Works wouldn't do that, you know? Builders and ground wouldn't do that, Fire Department wouldn't do that, and, you know, there, there are all kinds of little quirky things you'll see around and, and whatever have you. Not that I'm trying to expand staff, but it, it's, there, there are just so many little things that, that are unique to us that, that in terms of service and things that we would have to do that other cities don't have to do, but just food for thought. And we got a lot of those little quirky things that, that will fall in between the cracks, where technically there's nobody that would be responsible for that kind of thing, as an example, technically speaking. But, you know, somebody should get it, you know, but just something to think about in terms of a, some kind of, I don't know, community floater-type person that can catch that kind of stuff. Anyway, good discussion, good dialogue. You know, we go back and forth, and sometimes it gets long and drawn out and messy. But I think every conversation that we have here is well worth the conversation until we work around solutions and happy mediums. And that's just what it takes to get done, and I think overall, we do better than most cities when we deliberate and come to good decisions. So that's all I got.
Councilman Allen?
Okay, I got, I got a couple of things here. On the ninth, there was a music fest at the Tracy White Center and Recreation Department, and I think the community police were involved. That was a fabulous program. The band was just, was great. There was about a hundred-plus people there, and thank you very much for bringing that, you know, to the Godbe Road area. Chief Elmore, the tribute that you had the other day to nine eleven was fantastic. Just, just keep having those. That was great. Appreciate it very much. Oh, Chief Rogers, I'm sorry. You were there too. I'm sorry. Senior Summit, there was a quick senior summit on the fourteenth that provided a lot of valuable information to our seniors in the city, so thank you very much, Mayor. I know you'll talk about that. But a couple of things happened this weekend that, that deserve talking about. On Saturday morning on Godbe Road, twenty-three oh one or the Langston Apartments, there was a fire. Chief Elmore let us know about it. I went down there, and the police and the fire had everything under control. I mean, I can't brag on them enough. There was two people that jumped from the second story. The fire went up and rescued, I think, a couple out of there, but as I was coming up, you had gone to, to get breakfast for the, for the guys, which was great. City of South Fulton was there. There was just a lot of coordination. The deputy chief had already been contacting the, the Red Cross. I talked to about four of the residents there about their concerns, and they were happy that they were finding a place for them. You know, we think we have problems, but, but they lost just everything that they had. Thanks to your people. I appreciate it very much. Again, Chief Rogers, your, your people were there too. On Sunday, while I was at church, I found out that there was a tree down, and a lot of the power's off on Hawthorne, some of the apartments. Tim, Public Works came and moved the tree out of the way so that Power Department, and that's Hugh, that's your people, so that they could get to the telephone pole that was snapped in half and get power back to those people. It took about probably three hours, but you got that telephone pole in the ground, up, everything connected, and power got back within about three hours, and, and, you know. That's, that's just fantastic. And then while I was leaving there, I hear sirens going down Virginia Avenue. And it's the police department, it's the fire department. I go, and right up just a little bit west of the Waffle House, there's a guy that had been unresponsive, and the fire department were performing CPR, and the EMT, they worked on this individual for probably twenty-five or thirty minutes. And when they had gotten there, he was completely unresponsive, no pulse, and they worked on him, and they worked on him. And then just about the time Grady got there, which was like the time that I was there, it was probably a half hour, forty minutes, they got his pulse back. And Grady took him, and they took him off to Grady. And, you know, these are just examples of what our police, our Public Works, our fire, our Power Department do every single day that they don't get credit for. And this happened just on a, a two-day span. So I just want to tell you that we have got the finest employees anywhere, and I'll match them with anybody, but Chief, thank you very much. Everybody, Hugh, Tim, thank you all very much for what you do every single day. And that's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Gay?
I don't have but a few things, but Councilman Allen, I don't know how this election's going to turn out, but you're always welcome to be our chief appreciation officer. I had asked for the FMLA policy and procedures. That was not provided. My, my wife filed for FMLA when her mother had a stroke, and I didn't realize how restricted FMLA laws and rules are. And I know we have employees out on FMLA, so I'm, I'm curious to know how our policies stack up with, with other governmental policies. So if we could get that next time we meet. Second thing, if there's any monies left from the bathroom over at Rugby, I was told that there may be some dollars left that we could maybe spruce up our restroom. I was told there may be money left in the budget just inside the restroom. We could have that at the next council meeting, Ms. Johnson. I had asked for a turn arrow at Global Gateway in Riverdale. We've had a couple of bad accidents. So we, that's a blind spot, so she, I know you're on top of it, but if you could follow up on the turn arrow, I really would appreciate it. There is a, there is a, a traffic signal at Herschel and going into Wild Park that y'all not using. You could swap it out. I don't know if that's allowed. I don't know if she, she want me to announce this, but I wanted to publicly thank our planner, who I understand may be moving on for other opportunities. I just want to publicly thank her for her professionalism and what she brought to, to our city during her tenure, and I wish you much success in your future endeavors. I want to close by saying, and I'm not saying this because it's political, I am extremely disappointed with putting the Flint on our agenda. I don't know if that was discussed during our budget hearing, but I just don't think that was an appropriate ask for, at least in this political climate and in this financial climate. I, I think that's very inappropriate. Grants come and go. There is always an opportunity to, to do a grant. But it's just a perfect example, it's just a perfect example of a fundamental difference we have on this council. And, and, you know, some people worry about, well, a husband and wife is that, is that, is that, how does that look? Well, I'm planning on leaving. But a lot of people need to realize that my colleagues has voted at approximately ninety-five percent since they've been on council. The only difference between me and Ms. Stoner Gay is that we sleep in the same bed. But as far as the voting record, ninety-five percent have been together. And there's no way that anybody can agree that much. So that, that's telling of it in itself. So I hope our voters, which I believe you are woke, and I think you're going to respect, and, and I think you're going to be the final arbiter of what our issues are. So that's pretty much all I have.
Thank you, sir. I want to talk a little bit more about the Flint River Project, because I think it is just such an exciting one, but one I think that, that highlights that we have a diversity of opinion on this council, and I think that robust conversation is a good one. And, and I think that the opportunity to use our car rental tax funds is a unique one for a city like ours. We have a number of enterprise funds that alleviate the burden from our property taxpayers. And if you take a look at every single dollar that is spent from property tax, about fifty-eight cents of every dollar goes to support our public safety folks, as it should. You do an amazing job, and we, we thank you every single day for what you do. But in, in terms of property taxes themselves, they actually make up for, of the general fund, a little more than a third, about thirty-five percent of how we fund our core operations as a government. We are in a really unique situation in the city of College Park in that, because we have so many different sources of revenue. The restaurants that are going in at Barrett Park, that's a combination of municipal option sales tax funds and car rental tax funds. And so again, we have a lot of different mechanisms where we are able to alleviate some of the burdens while meeting the expectations and the needs of our residents. Do we always get it right? Nope. Are we perfect? No. But I think we have a unique city here, a wonderful one, that we have a lot to talk about and embrace. In fact, we actually have had, in the last three and a half years, over a million dollars spent in Phillips Park. Between the splash pad at five hundred eighty thousand dollars, we've got basketball courts going in at three hundred and thirty plus, we have a mini pitch court that is a field, soccer field, that's, that's at a hundred thousand dollars. That's a great story to tell. And we've also got, that's our first park that's actually going to have internet access for our residents. These are great stories to tell, because we are making progress in College Park, and we should be singing that from the rafters. But I wanted to thank our Recreation Department for an amazing festival that actually got me out of my seat and dancing at, at the Wyatt Rec Center. It was so much fun and just a great opportunity for our senior steppers who were on fire. They were amazing. And just a really enjoyable time with community and gathering, and even Councilman Allen was out there cutting a rug a little bit. So it was just really lots and lots of fun. After our last meeting, I traveled to La Grange for the Georgia Municipal Association Board of Directors meeting, and we had that in consultation with ACCG, which is our component on the county level. And we spent a lot of time talking about local option sales tax, because it was a real challenge last year, at least in some of the counties, to negotiate that sales tax. And so talking with our counterparts was a really fruitful way to break down some of those barriers and work on the process so it's better in the next decade when we have to, have to discuss that. And so there's a number of proposals that are coming out of there, and hopefully we'll see the legislature take some of those up in January. I want to thank Clean Spark, Aetna, Fulton County, Train, Train or Die Compound, Grandmaster Moreland, Clayton County, the Atlanta Community Food Bank, Judge Kevin Farmer, Attorney Teresa Hood, and the entirety of the folks who showed up for the senior summit. Our third annual senior summit was better than ever, and it all came from the group that I definitely want to give major thanks to, the Fulton County District Attorney's Office and Madam DA Fannie Willis, because she does a full-force summit every year that allows for elected officials and law enforcement officials to learn what her office is working on. And three years ago, when she started talking about some of the ways that they are addressing elder crimes, I thought this needs to be information that gets disseminated to our seniors. So we started over at Camp Truitt, using that great space, and last year we were at the Wyatt Rec Center, and today, and this year we were over at the GICC. And also want to thank Piper Sandler for lunch. They, everyone came through, and we had somewhere between about seventy and eighty folks there, just learning about all sorts of different ways in which to improve their lives and just get support from our community. So thanks to everyone. I definitely want to thank Ms. Deborah Callaway, because without her, that event would not have occurred. She worked tirelessly on it, and I also definitely want to thank Shontae, excuse me, Briggs, as well, because she is a great support to Ms. Callaway, and the two of them together, along with our Clerk's Office, were just phenomenal in their support of the event, and I sincerely appreciate all of the efforts. I also, to the Clerk's Office, want to congratulate Ms. Ames on earning her Clerk's Master's Education Management Development Program certification. That's a big deal. She is the first city of College Park clerk to earn that level of certification, and am I correct in that you are seeking your international clerk certification?
Yes.
All right. So we have someone in our Clerk's Office who is constantly working to strive, learn, do better, and, and, and all of that results in better services for our community. And so thank you, Ms. Ames, for all that you do, and I appreciate your service to this city.
Thank you.
Want to congratulations, want to congratulate the Atlanta Dream. They're in the playoffs, which is really exciting, because they have not been in the playoffs for several years. And they will be coming back to the Gateway Center Arena for their home playoff game, and hope. for their home playoff game, and hope everybody gets out and supports them. Also want to thank Keep College Park Beautiful and our Recreation Department for a cleanup at the Phoenix Trail this past Saturday. Looks like you had a good, good crew out there and made some, made some headway. Today is the last day, and you are in the last hours of being able to vote for the Phoenix Trail for a cleanup. We can still land in the top three. Go to NiagaraPerkyPark.com, and you can vote as many times as as many emails as you have. Just keep on hitting the refresh button, and you can keep on entering those emails. We can still pull this out, folks. Everyone has done an amazing job of getting the word out, and even if we don't win, we've had a very good showing, and hopefully we can get there next year. And lastly, I want to thank Public Works. I got an email yesterday about a drainage, a storm drain that had had some cones around it, and it wasn't even 24 hours before that, that storm drain. And I think it was in your ward, Councilman Allen. Is that right?
Councilman Clay.
Oh, it's Councilman Clay's ward. Okay. Well, either way, it was, I said, "Oh, my gosh, it's amazing how fast that was done." And when I related to the resident, she said, "Amazing." And I said, "Yes, it is amazing." And it's the exact same thing that I said. So thank you to the Public Works team for all that you do throughout this city to make sure that our residents are safe and our waterways are protected and all that good stuff. We did not go into executive session today, and so there are no minutes to approve from there or any motions to come out of executive session. So it is 10:35 PM. We are adjourned. Have a great evening, everybody.